Good morning. It's nine o'clock, April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and our regular Commissioners' Court meeting is now in session. First item is called by our county clerk, Mary Jane Vavala. Mary Jane, good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Judge Ratnall?
Present.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Present.
Commissioner Lisondo?
Present.
Commissioner Solis?
Present.
And Commissioner Gata.
Present.
We have a call, Judge.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Check time is our invocation by Dr. Roger Leder. Commissioners' Court Chaplain, Dr. Leder.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. You to pile your heads with me as we pray. Our Father, we come here this morning first thanking you for the many blessings we have in our lives because of you. May we never forget your love and your concern for us as we remember to recognize your hand in the work in our lives. So today, Father, we join here to experience one of those blessings, the gift of governing. The gift allows us to recognize and to realize conditions in which we may thrive as a people and a society. It allows us to raise our children, to live in safety, and to learn to help and encourage each other. So as you have ordained, we have leaders appointed over us to work toward establishing and maintaining these conditions of safety, civility, and mutual support. So we ask that you especially direct our leaders, our judge and commissioners, our elected and appointed officials, so that they may discharge their duties for this community, which secures the best for everyone in this time. Help us all today to trust in you and to experience the peace which you have promised to all who are prepared to receive it. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the Jesus of the Lord, the United States of America, and to the Republic of Central Africa. I had a number four communications. Fire chief, five of you got to be with us. I know you've been pretty busy then. I know you've had several large fires, but almost on a day to day basis throughout our county.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yes, we've been busy since last Commissioners' Court. I'm going to touch into the fires really quick. We had a total of, in a week span, it was, uh, one, two, three, four, five. We had five fires totaling approximately one thousand one hundred and fifty-five acres. We had, we had, and one of those was in Bustamante, which included also two structures, but fortunately enough, they were vacant structures, but they were considered structures. One house in a kind of like a
A storage barn.
Like a storage barn area, and they were completely burned out by the time we got there. Because with that day, we had three fires at the same time, two on, have we sixteen, one in Bustamante, the other one was further down, and one in Chihuahua. But the significant one was the one in San Ignacio, well, just south of San Ignacio, which was approximately about a thousand acres, and it was a five-day working fire. Two days to contain it and three days to mop up and do the fire squats.
Do we know what the cause was, Chief, for the fires? What started it?
No, not exactly. They were all considered grass fires. The one in San Ignacio was kind of hard to determine, basically, because that one started across Mexican states. And then did cross over to our state. But the other ones, some of them, one of them was a human error, like they were working on a plant sadly. So they were grinding and welding, so that is something that we try and, especially when there's a red flag warning, not necessarily is conducting a prescriber, but also working at the ranch is also very dangerous as far as when you're doing stuff like that, welding, welding, stuff like that. Because it'll spark, especially when it's red flag warning, because a red flag warning isn't just, it drives the moisture level, wind, all that takes into consideration when dealing with grass fires. But as far as the fires, that's, that's what we had, like you mentioned, it was a total of about one thousand one hundred and fifty-five acres in the span of one week. Totally to five different fires. And we got kind of busy again on the vaccine side. We did compare to last Commissioners' Court report given, we had only given two shots in the span of two weeks. I, today we gave, since last Commissioners' Court, we gave a total of sixty doses, ninety-nine percent of those doses were the second booster. That's what, that explains where we've been busy. As it did get approved, I'm sure most of you are aware of it, and those that are not, the second booster shot has been approved. And it's for fifty ages, fifty years or older, and at least four months since their second, since it's their first booster shot. That goes for both Moderna and Pfizer. As far as testing, I'm more sure you guys are aware as well, they are no longer doing pre-testing, it's only for the insured. That, that is everywhere, not just here in Sapata, that is nationwide. The pre-testing, the funds for that, has it been exhausted already? So it's only for Medicaid, Medicare, and private insurance holders only. They are trying to set up here where you can pay, but they do not have that option, only for insured, insured patients only.
Is there an option for someone to pay themselves or something with their car?
No, that's, that's what I'm saying, that right now here with, in some cases, in Ridge, I think they already have it. But here with Curie, they're still trying to figure that out, I guess it's a new thing for them. But they don't have the option to pay right now here locally with us. The only option that they have is private insurance, Medicaid, or Medicare.
Do we know what the cost would be, Chief?
Anywhere from one twenty-five to a hundred and eighty dollars per test. But they do not have that option.
Do they have any insurance in Sapata that they're still testing?
Yes, yes, they are, but it's the same thing. It's not pre-testing, it's only insurance. I don't know about the contingency, but I'll check with them. But they did mention to us that the next thing will be with the vaccines, they're headed towards that direction as well. As far as them being free, they have mentioned that it's supposed to be within the next two weeks, but they haven't told us anything.
That they will start charging for the vaccine?
It's gonna be basically the same.
Does CBS give out pre-test kids, because I know that my god, I don't have a prescription.
I don't know if they're here, I do know that they have approved pre-test kits at your local Walmart, HEB, CBS, but that was above now. I don't know if that has been any option as well, but I can check with you and advise us for that option as well. But that's all I have for you.
On the fires, I did reach out to Colonel Dill, Detective Kirby, with the Texas Military, and asked for his assistance. They were really helpful in controlling those fires. And their rate department with us at any, anytime, so very good resource they have while they're here.
Yes, they just reminded me, Judge, I forgot to thank you. Fortunately enough, we did not have to request a mutually party departments, but that would be considered a mutually national guard, so we did help out with two dozers. They helped out with the San Ignacio fire, which was much easier, because that's the reason why it took us so long to contain it. The reason being that we could not reach the fire because of the terrain.
The terrain.
Most, most fires along the riverside are always basically the same, as soon as we get it, we get the call, we already know what we're dealing with, which is the terrain. So most of it had to be dead burn until we get, got those resources with the dozers. And basically, you have to make a road to get down there. So the National Guard did go out twice with two dozers, they did help out. Also, the sheriff's office did help us out, with the guy saying he brought us food and drinks. But we did not have to request mutually as far as other party departments. And also, I believe the Governor Abbott did amend his declaration for disaster for the wildfires, which included our county as well. Because the first declaration we did, we were not included, actually, there was only fourteen or thirteen counties. But they, they did an amendment, which is hopefully gonna help us out, because I have spoken to the judge, we did a repair on our trucks. Before this fire came about, we had the money in the budget, it was just a large ticket item that was gonna basically exhaust most of our repairs and maintenance, but we had that for the rest of the year. It was roughly about thirteen thousand to fix that truck, but it was worth the investment, because it's a truck that had eighteen thousand miles. So we were, we are expecting, this is just the start of the fire season. So I spoke to the judge, he gave me the go-ahead, we fixed it. And as soon as these fires came about, we saw that our county was amended in the declaration. And an emergency grant opportunity came about for a maximum of fifteen thousand for any repairs that have to be done, or new equipment that has to be bought. So we already submitted for that, and hopefully we can get that reimbursed, those thirteen thousand reimbursed it, which we're hoping we will, and we think we will. But just so the court is aware that we were amended into that disaster declaration, and we did fill out a grant for repairs on our trucks.
Very much in grants, I think we just, today we'll be submitting a grant request to our Congressman Webb for the earmark for the fire station. Hopefully that will become a reality, I don't know if they're trying for many years now, but I think it's, the timing seems right. I think we should be able to hopefully get those funds and get some new
Hopefully, we're with our figures processed, we're with our figures processed, hoping that the Congressman can come through and help us out with this much needed project.
And this will be the next twenty years of cycles, hopefully, he says he'll introduce it forth, and we'll be able to get that funding.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Judge, I have some
Yeah, I'm just gonna go back to the testing, I've got some figures. I guess from the last report, which was three twenty-eight, twenty-two, we've had confirmed positive, we're up to twenty-three eighty-nine, an increase of one. Problem cases, one thousand two hundred and eighty-five, which is an increase of four. And I know the state is, you know, as the records come in, that we had an increase of two beds, we're up to fifty-five from the last report. So I guess they're still catching up on all the data, so we're still dealing with the pandemic.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. I passed out before reading this sheet right here, certificate of obligation, series twenty-one. And just wanted to go over on what we've purchased, what we've received, how much money is left at the end of the day. Starting off with the, the properties that we purchased, which was a landfill. On the, you have the, what we did was, we put the, on the, first, that column, either property or equipment or which department, the second column as well was proposed. This was proposed before we did the certificate obligation. So then the actual amounts that we spent, the P O that's related to it, and then those in relation to it. So the landfill, we had proposed seventy, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand. We spent the seven seventy-eight, four two thousand. Included the earnest money that we had given them at the beginning, twelve-five, we received a reimbursement for Stewart, some money that we had overpaid. So we got, we got that money back. The golf course, we proposed seven hundred thousand. Five hundred and one thousand was the first check that we gave to the Los Evans Golf Course Inc. And then what we did with the next item, next item was, we paid last week through the Commissioners' Court approval, the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was owed to the Ramírez family. A hundred thousand dollars of that was gonna come out of the certificate obligation, and seven hundred and fifty was from the grant that we're waiting on from Texas Parks and Wildlife, so.
All the documentation that has been submitted, we're, we're hopefully get that reimbursement soon, so we'll be looking after seven fifty. So yes, we basically had a hundred thousand dollars left for improvements, I think.
Right, which will be shown if you go to the next page, sorry, you have the next page, the last thing says golf course, and that shows the running tally that we've spent on.
We went some significant improvements, the golf course, it went to ninety, ninety-one thousand.
Which obviously been the monitor from the Court.
Yes.
Do we have a timeline on who received those funds from?
No, no, well, we're working with a consultant, hopefully all the documents will, will be submitted, and that's all their last word. So we, everything the consultant required of the county that he felt was necessary was forwarded to him, so we'll see.
And we were, last time, the meeting that corresponded to payment tower repayment, and y'all requested that. If we needed to take money out of the cash traffic fund, we could, Mr. Sabines was able to move some money around, and we avoided that, so.
Okay, yeah, I saw that in your report, you were submitting the money, where the money came from.
Yeah, well, we were a little sick money, so I didn't really do it, so.
Well, we'll stay on top of making sure that we get those seven fifty, and, you know, probably pull that, that.
Yeah, get those, that money back into our pockets. The next thing is the equipment at the county shop. The paging machine was not purchased, that was part of the proposed equipment we wanted to purchase. So on far right, I just wrote not purchased on there, the rest is either received or ordered, or the water tank, it's still open on what we're gonna do there.
Well, the water tank, I believe we've already received it.
Okay.
It's been, they were installing it last week.
Okay, okay, so we just haven't gotten to mine where we
Well, we just spent a hundred and
Yeah, right, we didn't spend the other funds.
Because the fact that we made up the difference of the cost of the dozer with, with what we saved with the water.
Correct.
Correct.
I think we were, I think someone was looking at a paging machine that might, we might be able to get a cheaper also, or less expensive. Then the rest of the things, the fire department, just what they ordered and what the expenses are. When we get to the water sewer plant, they had some amount, but then the lift station repairs, y'all had set aside a hundred thousand dollars for them, which was not in the original proposal. And they spent probably about eighty-five thousand of those hundred thousand. With that last one that goes to number four, the lift stations, number four, number seven, ramps, electromagnetic, mechanic. The twelve thousand four is gonna be on the agenda today, okay, so that's why that's, that's the plan. On, on the Commissioners for precincts, the proposal was that some were gonna get the gravel trucks, let's say like precinct one. But y'all decided later that we might not, y'all haven't figured out how y'all were gonna do that. So what I did was, we put the one sixty-five on there, because that was part of the proposal. It was not purchased through y'all, so on, at the end of all the Commissioners, I had the two gravel trucks with zero proposed, but then the total, the actual amount that we paid when we ordered it, so.
And you know what we originally brought the court through, was the Commissioner have like a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Right. And then the sheriff's office, we have a temperature unit, I haven't traced any monies that we spent, because we're waiting also on the on the L O, Operation All-Star and OLS, so.
Yes.
And that's moving along, I see, that's, that's moving along, so.
I think that, that grant did have several holes on the, for actual reimbursements.
Correct.
Where most of them, I think the last one was the county attorney, his office being able to prosecute those cases. He did send an initial compliance letter and saying that he would do so, they rejected that. I think the, the next version was submitted on Friday, hopefully they will accept it.
There's some wording on there was our last
Yes, and of course, they're wanting to see how, and I think there's, I think the Treasury had provided something in packets. As to what was needed also on, as far as the employee that will be receiving, you know, payment for the work in that operation. I think most of these have been met, so we're working on, basically, the breakdown of high bill salaries will be allotted to the different employees. Other than employees, they are gonna have to have an identification number, we're working on that. The Sheriff's Department already has that, but for the general fund employees, the courthouse employees, we don't have identifying ID for, so we're working on that. So I think, other than the county attorneys later saying that they will prosecute, I think that we'll be fine. And hopefully, we, we have submitted for reimbursement, I think the county has already paid close to half a million dollars on that operation. And we have to see any, any reimbursement, so make that pretty clear that we need reimbursement before we continue working on
Take a look at the listing, yeah.
Yeah, secure the order. But it, it looks good, I think we'll be okay as we move on. Just gonna take, make sure that we stay on top of all the reports that are needed, that I have out of the governor's office to continue with that grant, but.
John, on the email, on the second bullet, it says the fucking screen does not cover salary supplements?
It's not, there won't be an actual supplement, it will be a percentage of the salary.
Percentage of the salary.
Yeah, so that, yeah.
And then, and if I may interject, Judge, I've been in communication with the governor's office, beside, on the financial officer for this grant. And what I was told is that they would have to use Commissioner's daily activity report like this.
Yes.
And once they receive that time spent on the grant, that's how much the county would be reimbursed for the contribution of the grant. There will be no money added to the employee's salary, so I want that very clear. That it's the supplement that they're talking about, it's, it's money being reimbursed to the county, which is like
For these employees that are working on that grant, so it is, it is a payment to the employees that are working on the
That's not what, Judge, that's why Mr. James Seal, he's the grant manager
Well, if it's not, then what the court can decide what to do with those grants?
I don't think so.
I think these will be, and the court has already instructed as part of the submission of the grant, how much money are you spending?
Mr. James, the judge, said that he is the grant manager, Mr. James Minz is the program administrator for the grant. If y'all had any questions, any of the elected officials concerning the, you know, which all submitted as a request, that was a wish list that came from every department. And like he needs
And then that was submitted to the governor's office, and it was approved by the governor's office.
Well, they have to come to their desk, that's on the form of the
Will you receive approval of a grant? What they're saying is, as far as the supplement, sending a, an amount, they say ten thousand dollars for employee A, they're gonna say, no, we're gonna send you the ten thousand, then you divide it, it's gonna be on a, on a reimbursement basis to that employee for the percentage of work that it's doing on, on, on that grant. So we'll, we'll clear that out, certainly, if, if our employees are not gonna be compensated for doing the extra work for, in support of operations All-Star, then it's a non-starter for the county.
Well, that, that's a decision of the court, Judge, I'm not the decision maker here.
Yes, well, we've had, I've had several conversations with governor's office, and we may have forty-three percent. This will be an additional burden to the employees working on that grant, mainly the county attorney's office, the county clerk's office, my office, or the sheriff's department is already requesting overtime for their employees. If those employees can't be compensated, well then, what are we gonna do with that money?
It's, it's not my decision, I'm saying that
And that's why I was asking, just because we approved those adjustments, so, you know, just wanna make sure that we
We, and certainly we'll find out as soon as we submit our initial reimbursements, exactly what it tells. But I, I do have a meeting with another colleague of the governor's office this morning to clarify exactly what they agreed to in prior meetings.
Judge, what is the name of the person that you're having a meeting with?
Andrew Fredericks.
Okay, Mr. Fredericks needs to tell these two gentlemen to get that in.
Maybe there's some back-up communication on their part, but we may, you know, we, they, we've submitted everything that they require us to participate in this initiative, that the governor is requesting counties to do so, so.
As of four p.m. Friday, that's what these gentlemen told us, I know that y'all
We, on Friday, we did submit, the county attorney from my attorney did submit a revised letter of support for the, for the initiative. And as far as the salary adjustments, as far as the percentage of salary to these employees that have just also submitted. And as far as the daily activities report, I think most of the times that our employees will be working during county hours, hours, will be also OLS hours. It's gonna be almost impossible to say, okay, I'm thinking about OLS, do I put it down in time and it's taking? It, it's gonna be the eight hours of OLS and along with the county time.
Well, as long as it's
I know, so you'll be submitting your report, we'll try to free that hour, so, I appreciate, you know, your concern about it. And certainly, I'm concerned about it, I, I called the sheriff a few weeks ago and said, I know you, you have been given the go-ahead in December with the initial half a million dollars to, to start supporting Operation All-Star. We have received a single reimbursement, where the county has already spent half a million dollars or a general fund that was not budgeted. We won't have to suspend any future operations until we receive some money. So I, I, I concur with your concerns, and as of now, the sheriff's department is operating with Operation All-Star because of that, we haven't received any money.
That is correct, until the, I've got here copies of everything that's outstanding. It's not only one letter, but it's clarification on requests for travel, you know, the time of petition for that was spent on grant. There are several things that are pending as for what I can see off of the
Those, those have all been cleared.
Yes, I understand that they've been submitted, but until we get the green light, we'll be able to submit a reimbursement. And the expenditure that you were talking about referring to, aside from the half a million, was when we asked the sheriff to stop working the overtime, even though they've gotten the, the green light. Because overtime, we paid almost eighty-one thousand.
I know, if it has, there's a lot of employees, so yes, we can afford it. There's, we can afford to support OLS on the count, on our taxpayers' money, so yes, I understand, and the sheriff has certainly put a stop to doing overtime with OLS, and she will get some money, but.
And like I was telling Mr. Bedia and the sheriff, that as soon as all these exceptions get cleared, we'll get the green light, then we'll start submitting for reimbursement and see.
Well, there's a reimbursement already at the governor's office for the initial half a million dollars, so we just need to, we gotta clear these
Clear.
These two holes, and hopefully this week we'll have some resolution of that, and we'll start seeing some monies coming. I also did request for, for the other segment of the grant, that we, the county fund, had initial kind of a, some capital outlay to the, to the county to forward us a one-month expenses, so we can continue to operate. Instead of waiting an addition, a month till we spend all the monies from that first month, and then after reimbursement, to send us forward us an initial one-month expense. So we're, we're working on that, hopefully we can get that a forwarded amount to the county.
Judge, do we know if any other county has received reimbursement for overtime funds or?
Yes, there, I mean, I think there are three counties that are working, Jim Hogg, Kenny County, and I think Marv have received, and they're having their issues too, but they've already received some monies.
Yeah, there is overtime on the law enforcement side.
Yes.
I'm just wondering why it's taken so long for the governor's office to
We have a lot of holes, partly that was, was our, her fault. We, they were very explicit that they wanted full support of this initiative. The county attorney had concerns, and so there was a delay in him sending his support there, so that was the main reason. And there was a lack of submission of reports by, by, especially the sheriff's department, who was already working the, the grant. So I think we need to, we made it pretty clear that we're not gonna move forward with county funds, that we don't have that tax, the local tax clerk's fans on initiative from the governor, and they're not gonna help, help us.
Right, yeah.
Okay, all right. Other communications, Congressman Webb was, was here Friday announcing another grant, hopefully we can, we can get that funding in. And this was a, an earmark that he had proposed to the radio organization, nonprofit Neighbor Works of the Radio. And what, what that initiative costs for, it was a two-million-dollar earmark, and one million was guaranteed for Zapata County, for homeowners in Zapata County, which will allow for weatherization of homes, rehab of homes. We had an email with Mr. Navia, the CEO of Neighbor Works, they're excited about helping Zapata out. They'll be visiting Commissioners' Court, our next Commissioners' Court meeting on the twenty-fifth, to explain the qualifications of the program, any other details that, that the program will entail. But it's a good thing, and we, if we can spend those entire million dollars on, on our residents here, on them being able to rehab their homes on weatherization, it's a very good grant. I think we're just gonna have to keep it on, on top of things, and develop a good working relationship with, with Neighbor Works of the Radio. And I think we can to implement and bring that entire funding to our, our local residents. Who, as I mentioned, we, we had several storms last year that, that infected a lot of damage on homes in our community. And many residents have been able to repair them, if, we had one program, I think it was USDA. But I think with this program, we, we might be able to address many of those residents who have yet to, to fix their homes. So we'll, we'll see how that turns out, we'll be working with them. Like I said, they'll be here on the twenty-fifth to kind of describe the program and how the implementation of will go. But I certainly thank Congressman Webb for including Zapata County in that two-million-dollar grant. I just want to make one other announcement, I have a birthday announcement that I'd like to share with the public. We have Ms. Juanita Fieroa, who turned one hundred and three on Saturday, and I just wanted to wish her a happy birthday. Her family contacted me, she is a lifelong resident of Zapata, and, and she has many nieces and nephews who see her as their own, never married, Ms. Fieroa, Ms. Fieroa. But she certainly has lived a long life, and I want to thank her relative, the Orija family, in terms of Debbie Orija. has lived a long life, and I wanna thank her relative, the Oria family, in terms of Debbie Orias, Renee, and, and Debbie Junior for, for giving her a really nice, happy birthday. I will be issuing a proclamation in her honor, and, and hopefully she can share her secrets to, to long life. So, uh, happy birthday, Ms. Juanita Fieroa. Uh, we'll move on to public comments, uh, this section provides the public the opportunity to address the Commissioner's Court on any items on the agenda, members of the public. At this time, we'll move on to item number six, approval of invoices. Uh, we have your practice commissioners. We have invoices from March the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two through April the seventh, twenty-twenty-two, for a total of one million eight hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-five cents.
Motion moved.
Motion approved by Commissioner Melosa, seconded by Commissioner Vazza, although compared to I, motion carried. Item number seven is a pool of treasury report. Uh, we have, good morning, it's morning.
Uh, good morning, Judge, Commissioner. We're going to hand out the treasury report in front of you. Uh, the first page shows investments at Zapata National Bank, they total eleven million, four hundred and three thousand six eighty-three point thirty-five, and the interest earned, uh, was three thousand three thirty-six point thirty-seven. Year today, we earn fifty-one thousand five sixty-four point sixteen, eight on those investments. The following page, uh, shows some of the checking accounts, uh, that the bank, the operating account has the balance, has a negative balance of five sixty-four three fifty-four oh four. And we ran deposits of, uh, three million seven hundred and eighty-two point forty-seven. That's out of there, three million ninety-one one fifty-nine point sixty-three. And, uh, the, I won't read the other one, but on the bottom, you have running, uh, balance for all those accounts. The following is the, um, checking accounts that are, I have to figure something together. Tell us, they're elected officials, and they total, um, three million three sixty-seven and ninety-four dollars and ninety cents at the beginning of the month. We ran the deposits of eight hundred and twenty-eight, uh, four hundred and twenty-four thirty-four. We spent out of there, two million forty-nine-five-one eighteen point eighty-eight, collected ninety-balance of one million six ninety-eight three ninety-five point eighty-five. The following printout is our new operating, uh, general operating account. And, um, if you see, uh, uh, these are checking accounts under, um, that inside, the negative balance is under the predicated as of actual balance at the bank. That is the dollar amount that's at the, uh, at the bank.
Okay.
And if you go to page four of the, um, checks issued, we issued out of the, uh, total, um, operations account, three million two hundred and nineteen ninety-eight twenty-eight. Year today, we issued eleven million seven hundred and thirty-nine one hundred and eighty cents. And total of checks issued for all the funds were three million four hundred and eighteen four hundred and four point twenty. Following page shows the other jersey, uh, we made payments in the month of March, uh, fifty thousand six eighteen oh nine, and in order, seven thousand three forty-five point thirty-four. Those payments are generated by our county officer, so, um, we're close enough, we make a close payment. Uh, page seven is the, um, road team from North, uh, Orb Energy. That considers a direct deposit of the month of March, we received a deposit, nine thousand thirty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Year today, we received fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and point nine point seventy-two, and the collection percentage is a hundred and one point forty-six. From what we have projected, uh, receiving from, uh, well, what else? Following, uh, page shows the rental income. The month of March, the San Inas Civic Center deposited a hundred and fifty dollars, the Pavilion one thousand four hundred, Zapata Community Center two hundred, and that's all the, uh, rental income that we recorded for the month. Following page shows, sold the deposit into Fund Ten by our county clerk, uh, nine thousand four hundred and twenty-five, Fund Dean, twenty-five dollars. District clerk, thirty-eight thousand three sixty-nine point twenty-seven. District clerk, the deposit into Fund Fifteen, three hundred and ninety-seven. In our ordinance, we rented a deposit of two hundred and sixty thousand. And the sales act, we received a first deposit of a hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-five. Year today, from the sales cats collections, uh, we've, um, received nine nine sixty-five thousand four seventy-four point twenty-five, and that's forty point point seven percent of what you're bringing.
They'll, they'll below the, the target rate.
Yes.
Mr. Say, I think we have a new establishment option under the R one.
Uh, there are additional machines operating, yes, or, yes?
Yeah, and certainly, the renewal period is July first, so.
July first, so.
These, uh, entrepreneur numbers are fit with people that they can do it, turn around and make that money, they made that investment. But, uh, they're, they're, no, full well, they'll have to renew, uh, those.
We make that very clear to the conditions that we don't pro- we don't pro- and they pay the whole year, and they're instructed that July first, they have to pay it, so they.
And they pay this for three months remaining in the year.
Wow.
Yeah.
So, hence the, uh, you know, because we budgeted some money, so hopefully they'll come in and pay the renewal on July first. So, and you guys presented this, uh, on, on the bottom there. Page number ten shows the landfill, um, deposit for the month of March was twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-five, and the jail, three hundred and seventy-four, sixty-eight dollars twenty-seven cents. Jail toll on four thousand four hundred and two point thirty. Jail on fees, uh, five hundred and twenty-six. Jail office fees, eighty-five, and the EMS, uh, deposited fifty-one thousand two ninety-five point thirteen. Following page shows the deposit explained by the JP's. JP number one deposited twenty-two thousand eight fifty-one point thirty-three. JP, uh, number two, seventeen thousand nine seventy-nine point sixty. JP number three, seven thousand seven forty-nine point oh two. JP number four, fifteen thousand seven eighty-nine point sixty-one. And then we have running totals from the bottom there. The following page is just the overtime report that, um, the board has requested for the border works and store departments.
I, I'm wondering that the JP's are, how, how much outstanding we have in the different parties.
That, I don't know.
I mean, that, I guess we've been adding several years now, and initially, there was over two million dollars that, you know, unpaid fines and fees, and we entered it to renew. By the way, are we paying that, that, that company? Because I get emails from time to time that those.
Yeah, just our process, uh, I get the same emails and I talk to them, I'm in contact with them, and, and they'll still send it again, and.
So we're not in a different, or we are in a different?
I saw some payments in this, uh, invoices where we should catch up.
Yeah, we still, I think, was one JP.
One more thing on the company that's working there?
GH, GH S S N data, which, uh.
They may, uh, if, if Mr. Osadas, uh, can ask that collection agency how much.
That's what I was thinking, how much would happen to them.
It would be good to know, see how long we can expect these types of revenues, uh, to, to continue from.
And therefore renewal for us, we're bringing up the next Commissioner's Court.
Hopefully we'll continue to work with the administration, they have very.
No, they're, they're happy with us and talking to them.
Yeah, because, uh, I think, you know, those payments have to be generated from the JP's, you know, running through the audit to black the, 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 the.
Well, I'm seeing here that JP one has the present numbers?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, JP number one, year today, which has, uh, collected seventy-seven thousand eight ninety-eight point seventy-seven, and JP number two, seventy-four thousand eight twenty-one fifty. And JP number three, thirty-one thousand six eighty-seven twenty-three, and JP four, forty-four, three seventeen point eleven. So that's, uh, most of it is, uh, the collection agency, so, yeah, if we could find out and maybe get a report from them, because they don't have much money still out there.
We always welcome this one, these ones, but if there's a report you want to break, so. We'd like to see the numbers.
So, pass the in a hard report.
Very good for the, uh, that motion, so thank your court is presented. Motion by Commissioner, uh, Melosa, seconded by Commissioner Solis, to approve the treasury report represented, although compared to I, uh, motion carried. Item number eight is approval of checks issued. We have the same, uh, checks. We have checks from three twenty-five twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, through four seven, twenty-twenty-two, for a total of one million eight hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty.
Motion moved.
Second, motion by Commissioner Vazza to approve checks presented, seconded by Commissioner Melosa, although compared to I, aye. Motion carried. Item number nine is tax assessor collectors' department report. Good morning, my tax collector.
Good morning, ma'am. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Um, right now, uh, as of March thirty-first, we have a collection rate of eighty-six point thirty-seven percent. Compared to last year was eighty-four point thirty-six. And the current collection, we had a hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and five point eleven. Delinquent, twenty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-seven thousand, twenty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-seven and thirty-two. Penalty and interest, twenty-nine thousand five twenty-four seventy-five. Refunds, five hundred and thirty-seven twenty-five, for a total of a hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-nine and ninety-three cents. Interest and sinking, we have a collection of fifty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-seven point nineteen. Delinquent, we had twelve thousand two thirteen eighty-nine. Penalty and interest, we had ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-two point ninety-five. Refund, sixty-four forty-six, for a total of seventy-six thousand four sixty-nine fifty-seven. Farm to market, we have a dollar sixty-three. And the current, delinquent was twenty-two dollars and nineteen cents. Penalty and interest, thirty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. Home, fifty-nine point oh three. Special road and bridge, the current was fourteen thousand one ninety-eight point ninety-three. Delinquent, two thousand eight ninety-one point fourteen. Penalty and interest, two thousand six ninety-one point twenty-eight. Refunds, forty-nine dollars and fifty cents, for a total collection of nineteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-one point eighty-five. Home repayments, ninety-four. Delinquent tax attorneys was ten thousand five hundred and three point sixty-five. Um, I, I imagine that, like, going back to the JP's, uh, of course, it's, it's continually adding, so, I mean, you're, you may be, you may be seeing a lesser amount, but it's still.
Those delinquents, there wasn't a very strong effort in the past to, to go after those delinquents, fine, so. I don't think it's building up as, 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 with, I don't think, yeah, but we had a two million, over two million dollars outstanding out, so. It just, I'm sure it builds over time, but there was no effort to collect, or any successful ever in the past, to collect.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, fees and other collections, we had alcoholic beverage, sixty dollars. Tax certificates, sixteen dollars. Hotel motel tax, nine thousand two hundred and fifty-two twenty-two. Copies and faxes, sixty dollars. Voter registration, a hundred and eighteen dollars. School, um, sorry, interest and earnings, interest earnings, forty-one dollars and one cent, for a total collection of nine thousand five hundred and fifty-seven point eighty-three. Total collection, uh, was three hundred and two thousand seven hundred and fifty-one point eighty-six. Uh, check sent to the treasurer's office was two hundred and ninety-two thousand two forty-nine point fifteen, ten thousand five hundred and two point seventy-one, to the delinquent attorney. Our, um, year-to-date total on the hotel motel tax was eighty-two thousand, is eighty-two thousand five hundred and eight point ninety-five.
So. Judge, what was our budget projection on tax collection for this year? Ninety-two percent?
Yes, ninety-two. Uh, we had, uh, initially we had a ninety-five percent, which was, um, I guess not achievable in the last few years, so we dropped it, um, ninety-two.
Because Melosa, are we working on maybe getting somebody to help out the people with that program that?
We already have, we already have, uh, okay, uh, three Roxy, uh, the, the judge's office, Roxy and Monika are helping out. And then we have, uh, we have, uh, an employee that's helping out. I think we've done about maybe six different, um, people that have applied. And then we have somebody, uh, Cynthia Fangen.
At the library, yes.
I've got the library that is also helping out, if they have questions. I mean, once you get started, it's okay.
So, I wonder if this, would you put insert times of the day, or anytime, just bring any, any information?
Yes, we, uh, we decided to bring the library in because, uh, I think they might be able to help us. It is time to, the application process, so sometimes my staff, you know, I only got two assistants, might be busy. I think your staff, so, and we spread it out a little bit.
Yes.
Uh, this, uh, organization, Neighbor Works, may also be able to help in, in the future. We'll see how that goes, how they say they, they do that service, provide that service, too, so. But for now, I think we've got three, three different, uh, departments helping out, and, uh, we'll see how.
I, I work, I, it looks like we had some that have been approved already, um, and they, you know, the emails go directly to people that apply, so.
Uh, right, there, there's a lot, uh, our delivery tax attorney is sending out a mail out to all, uh, the residents that might have, uh, some delinquency, so I think hopefully they'll have to notify, hopefully open the letter. I, I, nobody likes opening the letter from a delivery tax attorney, but, but it will be a good thing this time around, uh, that there'll be some good information on there.
Yes, hopefully, it, you know, I think it's looking good, I think, uh, we'll get some, I mean, not like what it does go down, but they got over a million dollars in collections, but, um, you know, but we can.
Yes, well, I, well, I think we're helping the residents, uh.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, wherever, so they should take advantage of it, yes. We'll move on to the action items, we will, item we will deliberate, consider action on item number ten is to approve the advertisement of available new grant funding positions via Operation All-Star, Grant four three seven two six oh one. So basically, we'll be advertising for those new, new positions that were budgeted with the grant. And, uh, I think, uh, is it two weeks that we need to advertise? Two weeks, and, uh, uh, I, I think, uh, my office has two positions, your office has two, one?
I think it's one.
One.
One, county attorney has one.
County attorney has two, and then of course sheriff's department, you know how many departments, uh, officers will, uh, be in position with OLS, are you?
Three.
Three?
Three.
Okay, so those will, will be going out, uh.
Judge, and these will be two-year position?
Uh, as long as the funding is in place, so, uh, and, and it was two years, six months ago, I think we're down to a year and a half, so.
Motion to approve.
Yeah.
Upstate.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Melosa, although compared to I, aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number eleven is to hire Aurora Cepeda as a part-time employee at the San Inas National Water Plant for the collection of payments, uh, ten thousand dollars, three hours a day. I, I spoke with, um, Commissioner Berenio, I guess over a month ago, on, on the need to, um, there, we got over a hundred and fifty signatures from petition of San Inas residents that, that wants a lady in that office. I think, uh, after speaking with the Cepeda, she says, of course, she's a resident of San Inas, uh, and she has a date trip to Zapata in the afternoon, so she would be able to carry those, uh, those, any payments that would come into your office. To, to, and, but I know there's a, a question of whether we can actually import it in San Inas or not. I think we can slowly upgrade to that, but for now, she could, uh, you know, carry those, those payments or anything to, uh, to San Inas, I mean, to San Inas and Zapata for your office, and then, uh, be able to, uh, answer any questions. I think, I mean, there's an old ground support of, of San Inas residents that want this, that have been requesting this, and I'm sure, you know, the original take, three hours, uh, at ten dollars, thirty dollars a day, uh, hundred fifty dollars a week, and two hundred dollars a month for the next six months, or you can give it with, with, uh, fringe benefits of four thousand dollars. I think it's a worthwhile investment, and to make, uh, over two hundred residents in San Inas are happy, uh, so. That's, that's my motion to hire.
Well, I know, Judge, that I've been breaking this, uh, concern, that the San Inas didn't want somebody to, to collect in San Inas for a while. And I know that this is a good thing, to be, but I know that we have, we have spoken that maybe sending somebody from your office, I don't mind hiring, that, that we hire someone to help there, because like the judge says, they can actually answer questions and concerns. I know they call me.
I, I think the concern about sending someone to the office is already that there are, over there, that the office would work, and I think that would, uh, make the operation of this, the local water plant, the office, uh, bill harder to manage. There's certain days throughout the, throughout the month where I'll be able to send.
There are certain days throughout the month where I'll be able to send somebody from the office. As far as payments, we do have Dropbox there that the residents can, of course, drop off. I have operators that come through from San Antonio and they can bring the payments.
I think what they want is somebody physically there to visit with and drop off the payment on a personal level, the personal interaction. So, I think what I'm proposing is not, it's a simple solution, help them with their concerns and also help the operation of the water plant. I believe sending somebody to San Antonio is a good idea.
We don't have anything, I know that Menez is there today, actually. He's trying to see what it's going to take. He's already informed that we're looking at, of course, a new computer, so we can have the SW system there. Of course, a receipt printer, so we could print out these receipts for the residents that are...
I think for now, a pop here, there are tax receipts, make some receipts there and bring them on a data basis and put them here for now, I think.
In most quarters, set a firewall because we are dealing with financials.
And all that can be said with due time, but these folks want something done now, that's why we're there. I've been waiting for you to do something on this and it hasn't happened. I made the motion to hire, is there a second?
But let me ask you, where that money is going to come from?
If four thousand dollars, I understand, Judge. It'll come, it'll come from the general fund, Judge. And it'll come for the water plant. Because you just spent three thousand dollars in Austin. Yeah, right. This is four thousand dollars to help the residents of San Antonio. I made a motion, is there a second? If there's no second, then the motion dies.
No, and I don't want it to die, I just have another question, Judge, and I know that I, because I actually...
And as a matter of fact, Judge, it was not three thousand dollars. Pick it up.
What else?
No.
Well, anyway, whatever, you might have some important business there, but what I'm saying is, the amount of money that is being spent on this to help the residents of San Antonio is very...
We have a lot from San Antonio coming every day, right?
We have... Do you have nobody in the office, Commissioner?
She can stay there for three hours.
That's what I'm proposing.
Well, she can stay, we don't have to hire another one.
No, but that person is needed. I'm in a motion, is there a second? Then it'll die.
Well, just wait, I'll make...
Do you have someone that can go to the office or your office is very busy?
There are some days where it's not busy, like I said, for sure, there are certain...
Just a minute, I wanted to say, I know that we saw this because they had called me from San Antonio because I'm always there. They told me that they knew that we were going to hire somebody. The only concern was that, was it put in the newspaper because other ladies weren't interested? No, I'm just...
You don't hire people left and right for your, who's the operator in the paper? This is a part-time employee.
No, like I say, I don't have no concern because these people have announced that they're not...
So, Judge, this position won't be part-time, but like one day is...
Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday.
Monday through...
So, do you have somebody Monday through Friday that can go Monday through Friday, every day over there? Do you have somebody Monday through Friday?
Yeah, that can go on a daily basis.
No, like I said.
Absolutely not.
I have certain days where I just can't afford, which is...
How second the motion? Motion, you have a second? Any other discussion? All of the fairies say aye, I vote for it. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Attorney Judge. Item number twelve is to approve the demolition and disposal of the old bridge located at the Fátima Park due to liability concerns from the community. Commissioner Mendoza, we'll be talking about the old bridge?
Yes, Judge, Commissioners, this was, I believe, a bridge was brought in from Zapata, I guess, some years ago, way before my time. And it's been there at the Fátima Park for many years. It's very deteriorated, has a lot of wood on it. And the residents there in Fátima are concerned because since it's at the park, the kids are climbing on it and walking over it, so it is a liability issue for the county, in addition to a safety concern. So, we did go and look at it last week. There is a way that we can remove it. We have to probably tear it up into three pieces so we can use it in a hollow because it's pretty big, it's a big structure.
It is an historical structure.
It is an historical structure.
So, we're going to hollow it?
Well, that's, we have to find...
Or can we fence the area?
It would take up most of the area of the park, Judge, because it does take up a big part of the park there.
Yeah, I think we should try to see if we can restrict access to it, but I mean, it is a part of our history of our community. I'd hate to just cut it apart and trash it somewhere, so...
If there is a way we can move it in one piece, I did speak to MedLog since they have, you know, bigger equipment to do, to see if there's a way we could transport it to a different location, because the residents of Fátima are, you know, they want it moved from there. I get a lot of calls.
Let us figure out where we can display it as part of our history and I'm against just cutting it up as...
No, I mean, if we, if we can move it in one piece, I mean, I'm all for that as well. If we do it in house, we wouldn't be able to, you know, remove it in one piece, though. We would have to contract somebody to move for us.
Once we cut it up, I think, you know...
Yeah, no, it's not...
Well, let's look at, we can make it a suggestion, how we can make it safe and fenced in and have it on display there for future generations to see our history of that.
So, we'll look at that and I'll present some proposals of course. So, I guess we can table it, pronounce it, so motion to table.
I'm going to table.
Motion to table. Item number thirteen is to authorize procurement of services for the preparation of a colonial fund application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the San Antonio water system.
Judge, I do have to put this one in the...
I think there's two, or is there any?
Yes, I have to take this, the item also, number sixteen, which is to authorize the hiring of professional services, which would be for the engineering.
I think we have until July to, you know, go out for an application, so it could be a good start.
Yes, go ahead and get started. I talked to some people about just getting started.
Sure.
So, I make the motion. But for sixteen and... Yeah, for thirteen is more specific, saying...
Well, I think the court had, we can come back to it. I think initially the court, the previous, we had submitted this application last year, I believe, or the year prior. It was not accepted, so the court had made it, I guess, yes, that brought it to be at the top of the list.
Okay.
So...
So, I just want to...
Thirteen, sixteen, thirteen, with the intent of, you know, signaling that...
How second the motion?
Motion by Commissioner, who made the motion?
You did.
Well, it's only second by Commissioner Solis, to authorize procurement of services for the preparation of the colonial fund application to the Texas Department of Agriculture with signifying the San Antonio Water Plant to be the project that is allocated for visitor use.
It's much needed.
Yeah. All of the fairies say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number fourteen is to approve the purchase of Toner for the Jefferson P. Three-C Two to be taken from the technology fund.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gasa, second by Commissioner Mendoza. All of the fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number fifteen is to enter agreement with Canales Gasa Bomb P L L C for the audit services regarding the financial statements pertaining to the government's mental activities of Zapata County for the four years ending September thirty, two twenty-one, and through September twenty, twenty twenty-four.
Is this the current firm or do you assume it's... Yes, sir, and this one would be an amount of forty-five thousand for the years twenty-one and twenty-two, and forty-eight thousand.
Motion by Commissioner Gasa, second by Commissioner Solis.
Have we, have we got any, we've been in communication with them, right, as far as how important it is to turn this object in?
Yes, yes.
So, they have agreed to our terms?
Yes, it's just we need to get them to...
Get them the information, I think, yeah.
Okay.
And motion second, all of the fairies say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. No action on sixteen. Item number seventeen is to approve the payment to Renta Electro Mechanic Incorporated for repairs to locations four and seven in the amount of twelve thousand, four hundred from the six obligation series twenty twenty-one as originally allocated.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Solis. All of the fairies say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. All this end up...
On sixteen, I'm sorry, one hundred and sixteen, was that part of thirteen?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we don't want to do both, we don't want to do no action on that one.
Well, because sixteen is the one that actually gives the authority to do the preparation of the, to hire the professional services.
Well, that's what we're going to do with thirteen. We're going to do this.
Okay, okay, yes.
We have to do some...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that one is only for preparation, the other one is for engineering also, sixteen.
Well, they all come in at the same time, so. You want to do that one too?
Yeah, that's fine, just I'll make a motion.
The one just first, you know...
Approved by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Solis. All of the fairies say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, I feel better, yeah, okay, thank you, good.
Item number eighteen, to review existing easement on thousand short drive.
So, it's all right, it's morning.
Good morning.
Morning, it's all right.
Good morning.
This is the area that we had all residents coming in last time to talk about that easement towards the back.
Yeah.
Are you sure you're working on it, Tom, that you're working?
Yes, I'm sure.
So, currently, the easement is how, what is it likely to be, of the easement?
It's very much on, I provided an area on the provided, hey, where shorelines are at. And so, on the first page, there's an area, second page, there's a shoreline layout. The easement runs on the back of the lots, or it's a twenty-foot, I guess, it's twenty-foot eastern entrance going on the back of all the lots. We currently, if you look at the grid on the second page, it shows only a few lines. It shows only a few lines in the middle section, on the north part. If you're looking at, I guess, in this section, the middle, that, there were just a few homes there at times when this map was created. There's more homes now, and so that is the back of those lots. So, there's an existing easement, it's twenty-foot easement.
I think twenty feet is essential to have...
Yeah, I mean, if anything, if we were going to consider reducing it, we would maybe reduce to fifteen, you know, and at the very, very, you know...
And the twenty feet is part of their property, right? It's not part of the, I mean, this property that is...
No, it's part of the easement.
It's part of the lots. And I imagine that these homeowners or these property owners, when they signed that paperwork, it wasn't included in the paperwork that it included twenty feet, is that correct?
Yes, so, some of them are connected to the front. They were able to, the home is high enough, there is a few lines in the front, they're able to connect to the front, but there are some homes that are not there. And so, the land may be lower than the front street to where they may not have enough grade to flow to the front, they may have run down on the back.
So, again, would you have enough capacity there, which is for when the area completely populates, right?
Yes, we, well, with that easement, we do, there's that existing line. It's a clay, I guess, clay type material line. So, we would want to consider replacing it in the future. I spoke to Mr. Chapa from our wastewater department, and he did mention that to me, was it is a clay pipe, so every time you have to reach the service connection, they have to be very careful because it ends up, you know, it cracks and it continues to break through, it's very brutal. Usually, what tends to happen is also gets roots from trees that get in there and they start clogging those lines. So, we may want to consider in the future, yes, replacing it with PVC. It's a much better seal and they last, you know, I guess, much longer.
So, what would your recommendation be, Mr. Mendoza?
That wasn't my question.
I don't want to remove it at all. I think if we, if you want to maybe compromise, we could maybe go to a fifteen-foot easement.
Well, I don't think size zero would be enough to satisfy their concerns.
No, I think they want to eliminate it completely. And I wouldn't want to eliminate it completely because you could put it electrical on the back of the lots.
Right.
And then it's a sewer, and then, the thing is that if we do not keep something, whenever we have to service it, we'll have to go through people's property and will damage their existing, you know, landscape.
Oh, and you did the planning for this property and all that, correct?
No, I was planning it a long time.
Okay, so, would you hope for a fact that in the sales contracts, it did specify there that it included? I'm just, I'm just verifying, because I was told it did not.
Yeah, I'm not sure if on the sales contract, it states that or not, or includes that. I can research that further. All I, what I did is I just, I got a copy of where existing lines were and, you know, but I can research to see if on the few sales that we had, who were, is it included or not included, and that way we can make references.
Yeah, because the concern is that nobody was aware that they were going to be doing a twenty feet of their property.
I've also seen three calls and they said...
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because I haven't seen contracts or these or anything like that myself, so I, I don't know for sure. If, okay, see, that is another concern, because I, one of the property owners, I think, had, I believe, planned to build like an Albor Palapa or Suriho, and it was going to pretty much go into, you know, encroach these those twenty feet because they weren't aware of the twenty feet, so.
If, if we can, can I request that we table this item?
Yeah.
And so that I can look into if it's under contract, not under contract, and it was, like, how is it being, you know, just transferred? And then we can, I can make a better recommendation in terms of whether we can actually remove it. If the lots that are there already have service to the front, you know, there's something that maybe we can consider. But, you know, if they don't have service to the front or there's still the empty lots, then there's still, I mean, there's some significant disruption going on there, but they're still planning on that.
Yes.
Yes, I know there are some enclosures and it's all...
I make a motion to table.
Motion to table, Commissioner Gasa, second by Commissioner Mendoza. All of the fairies say aye?
Aye.
Motion table. Item number nineteen is to review status for Mina Flinders Park.
So, we're, I guess, we're working on the Mina Flinders Park and we're working on the Eglise of Park as well. On the Eglise of Park, we're still working on the night time systems, we'll look at further along. And we brought it in for review and consideration. If you go to the page five, that shows pretty much what's being proposed. And we're proposing, starting from left to right, a four-hundred square foot playground area. And then we'll propose a twenty-five by twenty-five canopy. Then some ten by ten canopies, so they can have, you know, I guess, picnic shelters, very similar to what they have in precinct four. And then we would also propose a asphalt walking track around the facility. And then we're looking at putting in a multi-purpose field. It could be a baseball field, soccer field, but we are putting in a multi-purpose field there on that facility. We're looking to, I guess, the grades from that field, flatten them out a little bit so that it's not as deep going down towards the beach. The parking itself, we left it similar to what we have parking on precinct four on, behind the, yeah, no, not behind the, the one that's Commissioner Gasa's office. Back there, there's a walking trail there and it's fenced in as a basketball court. They let for parking, parallel parking along the park itself. Because if we put in, we put in parking, like we did in front of Commissioner Gasa's office, that's a lonely field, but that eats up space from the park itself. So, if we need to, and we see that we have more parking needed, we can do that. We also own, the county also owns the property at least, and so they should also...
Yeah, we have to do either concrete or maybe, if it don't work, they can go to grass real quick.
Well, we wanted to do that, not, kind of like we did on precinct four. That's been working really well, like it's lasted for a long time, so that's already, I've already seen grass going through it and it's held up. So, when we looked at the cost, we initially thought of putting in crushed granite. It gives a nicer appearance, but when you look at the cost of the crushed granite, it defeats the project.
It's expensive.
Yeah, it's expensive. So, that would have been, that was our first choice. But then an asphalt trail version, that used, gets used a lot over here, and I'd like to see the other one get used a lot as well.
And I like the idea, it's a multi-purpose field because like soccer is very popular.
Yes.
Now, I don't think we have, you know, a nice soccer field anymore in town that we actually can name or soccer. So, it is, it is a very popular sport, so that'd be nice to have, we're going to dedicate a few more.
Yes, and now that the school district has a soccer as a, I guess, one of their action sports or U I L sports, there's a lot more kids playing, you know, they play all for us.
Yeah, I know the field behind Stride, which is already a soccer field, but that gets used a lot for soccer.
No, I mean, the church also gets used a lot for soccer as well. This one, I think, will be a little nicer and we'll have, we'll also have one on now. No, and then the church also gets used a lot for soccer as well, this one, I think, will be a little nicer, and we'll have, we'll also have one on, uh, precinct three on, uh, west, no, it's, uh. We have one on Montalee Lane, but we'll have one for this precinct, we'll have one for precinct, uh, one, precinct, uh, four.
Yeah, that one, we have, you know, about seventy kids a day using the soccer field.
They'll get used to it.
Yeah.
Well, the only problem there, we need to add some grass, because right now, it's, you know, it's just a bunch of dirt.
We're proposing grass on this one.
Right, I saw it in the. Dirt and stickers.
And I really didn't want to, because, because you know, we have that.
Yeah, for the grass, yeah.
I really hate.
It's just turf is very, very expensive.
Yeah, we may have to put, uh, seed instead of, like, turf, but we're, we're gonna check and see, like, maybe put as an alternate item, like when we did it, if it comes in with a number.
But there's irrigation included in this, or?
We would have to bring in two inches of.
You have to.
Yeah, so that the main thing, if they're not, everything that.
But that's not included as, as irrigation on, on the field yet, as an item.
The cost.
We have a cost in there for irrigation.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll.
Yeah, it's gonna have to require us.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have it, we have an item, so it'll, it'll be basically, um, yeah, the main thing that.
Kind of pulling the view that requires this water.
Yeah, and it's hard for, for our weather.
That's very good.
That's what we have, we're gonna have to get, uh, if, you know.
Very nice, but.
Simple and basic, Judge.
Yes, very nice, and the, the parking will work, I don't know, but, I mean, it's a large, uh, lot.
It's a large grid, so that's what we have over here on, on, on Glen Street and Presto, uh, people park.
As far as, you know, including fencing or what?
Where do you put fencing in? Uh, that, that even should start at.
Well, because I currently tend to drive.
We include a, a four-foot chain link fencing.
All around?
All around, yeah.
Okay. That's very smart, I can't see it.
Yeah, just, just to keep it, uh, keep the cars from getting on there, we'll have a, a gate so that our, our maintenance, you know, people can, can get in and, so maintenance, but, but other than that, we like to keep, uh, like, four wheelers and, and the cars out of those fields, because.
Yeah, we've actually worked on closing off all the parks in the county, because the four lot, we should be open, cars will actually drive in and in.
So we're, we're proposing, uh, a four-foot perimeter fence, four-foot fence, I think, is.
Four-foot fence.
Also to the game, then, it makes soccer boggle up, and then they'll be able to run to the street without, first, I don't know, I don't know. So that, that's what we're proposing.
Does this require any action?
Uh, just authorization for us to proceed to go out and leave.
Motion. Motion move. We'll have just a motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Gasa to proceed, uh, with the construction plans, uh, or classification.
We'll, we'll, we'll add this back, so that they, uh, we'll submit them to Texas Department of Wildlife.
Okay.
For review, they'll send them back with an notice of proceeding, so.
So this, a motion to proceed.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is true. It's going along, and I, well, I know some people are excited, I see that.
Yes, they are.
It's a good, it's a good, and, uh, motion second, although the parents say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty is to request the use of Sabata County Committee for a angle to benefit the junior ROTC.
Motion to.
Yeah. Motion by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Gasa, what, what day is this?
It was yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah, and then it's ratified.
I got replaced today.
So, okay.
I'm very late, I apologize.
Was it nice? Actually, I had a good time?
Yes, I had a good time, and, uh, they had, uh, they had a lot nice prices, there were two TVs, and Sergeant Morales actually won one.
So basically, what we're doing today is waiting the fees, you already used them, so we'll wait the fees.
Yeah, okay, and you had given us a heads up at the last meeting.
Yes, I did.
Okay, motion second, although the parents say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-one is to request the use of the Sabata Community Center on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-two for the junior ROTC.
Motion move.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Gasa, and no, no fees, Commissioner, maybe the fee also, although the parents say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Those kids are great, they do, they support, they support our community.
They know for law and that.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, and then the hope is what the Easter kind of end that Joey and Honor do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jose, okay. And, uh, uh, the military, I would hope to know, the military ball is a requirement.
Yes, they, they'll donate for any.
Yes.
I, I, I remember, Lieutenant Grill is in charge of, of base camp here for the Texas Military, he wants to be very involved in, in, uh, you know, especially anything regarding veterans, or maybe this, he, he might express some interest in helping, uh, junior ROTC, see how, maybe we can, uh, have Mr. Sergeant Diaz reach out to him and, and see how we can help. He really wants to help, I, I met with him last week, and he wants to, uh, for us to involve the Texas Military in whatever they can help us with, especially with, with veterans events and maybe, uh, uh.
Yeah, because it's our real, so.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, uh, do you have, can you send me a number?
Yes, I'll give you a number and I'll get it for you.
Okay.
I actually don't have the number, but I'll get it for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. I know that they helped out, so that's also good for the redistribution.
Yes, if you want to.
Very well.
Yeah. We have a consent item, we have street lines, uh, three oh five third street.
Motion move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Gasa, second by Commissioner Solis, although the parents say aye.
Aye.
We have a line item transferred from Texas A and M Agribank, uh, ten dash six six five three twelve, uh, communication and program to ten six six five four twenty-seven workshop, thirteen hundred dollar motion by Commissioner, uh, Mendoza, second by Commissioner Gasa, although the parents say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We've got resolutions and proclamations, we have to accrue a resolution supportive of Operation Stone Guard fiscal year twenty twenty-one, last year, here, uh, the, uh, uh, it's right here, yes. As I have been agreeing, uh, resolution support of Operation Stone Guard fiscal year twenty twenty-one, whereas Sabata County Commissioners Court finds it in the best interest of citizens of Sabata County that the operation Stone Guard should be operating for fiscal year twenty-one and should then be twenty-two, or twenty-one?
Uh, it is twenty-one.
It's still, it's still, uh, fiscal year twenty-one, okay. Whereas Sabata County Commissioners Court agrees to provide applicable matching funds for said project as required by the Office of the Governor's grant application, and whereas Sabata County Commissioners Court agrees that in the event of loss or misuse of office of, of the Governor's funds, the Sabata County Commissioners Court is sure that the fund will be returned to the Office of the Governor in full, whereas Sabata County Commissioners Court designates primary judges or referral, and the grantees authorized official, the authorized officials give the power to apply for, accept, reject, alter, or terminate the grant on behalf of the Alregent Agency.
Okay.
So now therefore, here's all that Commissioners Court of Sabata County approves submission of grant condition for Operation Stone Guard to the Office of the Governor.
My motion stands, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Solis, although the parents say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, Commissioner going silent before, uh, we. And we have our next item is a resolution on child abuse and neglect awareness and prevention month, requested by Dr. Serenita Sanchez.
Professionally employed, your Judge, this morning.
Thank you for waiting for the entire.
Sorry, I hope you actually asked a lot of people before, but I confused, forgot, so, but y'all, what's your marketing? I don't know.
I went to the agenda, make sure to, to get it in, but now he has no problem.
Thank you for being here with us.
Well, yeah, good morning, thank you for having us today. My name is Maida Foster, I am president of the Children's Advocacy Center, the board, uh, for the Lady One West County. With me this morning is Edward Rodriguez, he's a C A C therapist.
Yes.
I don't know if you're aware, he visits Sabata on a weekly basis, several times during the week, I'll give you some numbers in a little while, uh, as the case is. And also Jessica Vallejo, uh, she's the office manager, okay?
Thank you for being here.
April is, um, the month of, uh, it's got a long tag, April is Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention and Awareness Month. So we are here to, um, talk about the number and promote.
Thank you.
So I want to give you, uh, first of all, good morning, so I want to give some numbers, uh, so from last April twenty twenty-one, official now, uh, we provided two hundred and three therapy sessions.
Thank you.
From here is coming, so that's two hundred and three drives stated, you know, from before, where we had this, they would have had to drive all the way, uh, to get these services. So for these two hundred and three sessions, we serviced seventeen individuals, two were parents that required therapy services and had fifteen children. So that was both in San Asa and in Sabata. Uh, currently, there are six children being served here, and there's a seventh gonna be added this week. Uh, so I'm currently coming every Tuesday the whole day, and then Wednesday mornings. Uh, we've been in person since June, uh, but we still continue to offer virtual in case if anyone needs to, you know, for a week, or there's even some guys that prefer on virtual, and that's great too. Um, and so apart from that, we would like to offer a, a token of appreciation. Uh, so, so again, it is tradition that we have the, the pinwheel, so blue pinwheel represents the wisdom childhood that we wish all children can have.
Boy, and we, we appreciate the services that you, uh, you offer, the lives are, you're very important. And we appreciate it, we want to give the children a lot of love.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioner, we're very thankful.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I know, she, she's still here, you know, she, she wasn't able to come today, but.
I talked to her yesterday.
There's nothing to motion.
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, second by Commissioner Gasa, any revision, although the parents say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let me just sign, you know, take.
Yeah, before I make a motion to adjourn, let me clarify something, because not three thousand dollar is spending in Austin. It was a thousand three hundred, and the reason that I went, because I'm gonna get reimbursed, okay?
Very good, thank Commissioner for the explanation.
Is that time we also get a group?
Yeah. Yeah, ma'am, you will. And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Give a second. Second.
Second, King second.
Second.
Judge, adjourned, you notice?
Very adjourned.
Okay, got it.